If we could call this meeting to order, and please start with a moment of silence for prayer or reflection. Thank you.
Okay, so first we have adoption of the agenda.
Any additions? Okay, seeing none.
Next, we have adoption of the minutes, item 3-1, page 5. You'll find minutes from our last meeting on May the 22nd.
Any errors or omissions? Right, seeing none, adopt them.
Now we'll move on to presentations. So we have Dwight Brown here, he's our general manager of Municipal Works, and he's here to talk about the Alberta Municipal Benchmarking Initiative for roadways and snow and ice control.
And just for everybody's information, this main screen here is not working, but this one for the public viewing is. So you'll have to follow along here. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for this opportunity. This was sponsored through the Finance Department, Dennis Egerd. He sends his regrets. He did ask me, though, to make a couple of points, and I'm going to turn now to slide two. So I think if, Mr. Mayor, if council loses track, or I lose track of where I'm at in the, sort of, the slide deck, please let me know. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to talk and do both at the same time, but I shall try. In terms of what is the AMBI, this was funded through a regional collaboration grant with municipal fairs. Road and snow, which I am presenting tonight, is the last of the sort of sixth and seventh in the slide deck, or the series. Transit will be following shortly. So I believe that would be the end of the, at least for the time being, the benchmarking exercise. Turn to slide three. So, no surprising here, no surprises in terms of why benchmarking. And in terms of what are the measurements. I'm now going to be at slide five, which talks to the municipalities that participated. So, good mix of different municipalities, different levels of service, demographics, weather, size. But there were a lot of similarities which came out through the benchmarking exercise. And through all of that, I believe it was a fairly good news story for the City of Medicine Hat, both in terms of how we compared, in terms of our cost of services, how we compared with our service levels, and how we compared with, sort of, adhering to or being at the top end of industry best practices. It will be a two-part presentation. I'm now on slide six, the first one being the roadways, and then I'll follow that with the snow and ice. So first, roadways. So, slide seven, in terms of what, what sort of roadways entail. Again, probably no surprises to what that looks like. And in terms of factors influencing roadways, again, pretty motherhood if, sort of, what defines those things. So now I'm at slide nine. I'm going to slow down a little bit now. So in terms of total transportation costs, I'm going to go through four aspects. The first one being maintenance, which is lanes and potholes. Second one being operations, which entails street sweeping and line painting. Then traffic control, which is signs and signals. And then finally sidewalks. And throughout each of those four areas, we'll show the comparables to the other municipalities. And you can see how Medicine Hat stacks up against the other participating municipalities. This is the same comparable in terms of total transportation costs, just outlined a little differently. The previous slide, you saw the various functional areas. In this slide, it shows the amortization costs, indirect, direct, and overhead costs. And some of the, while the maintenance costs of the direct were fairly straight, fairly comparable, there were some differences in regards to amortization, how different municipalities amortize, how they define overhead and indirect. So for the purposes of this exercise, and what we, what sort of the group landed on, overhead costs were defined as the corporate structure that supports the operation. So the CAO, all the way down through the various corporate aspects that entail, sort of, what the organization looks like and how it supports what we do. Then kind of drill down a little bit, and we get into indirect costs. And that's the departmental aspect, same thing, in terms of the general manager, the various engineering and pieces that support that particular operation, including our corporate costs around ICS and building services and that. And then, of course, direct, probably being fairly self-explanatory, the actual direct costs associated with delivering that service. Now I'm at slide 11. An interesting comparable, very similar if you looked at the previous slide, when we looked at, sort of, where we all stack up in terms of cost delivering of services. And then you go to our mix of contracted services to in-house, very, very comparable. And there's been some questions around what, how does Medicine Hat, sort of, define or look to, how much contracted services do we look towards and why? So a number of different sort of aspects. First off, we want to maximize our asset. In terms of, we've got folks, staff, we have equipment. We want to make sure throughout that year that we utilize those. So for example, we have graders. We want to try to maximize the use of those graders throughout the year for snow and ice, for lane grading, the different aspects of our operation, likewise with staff. However, there are things that we neither have the competency, the capability, it's specialized. We wouldn't be able to maximize those assets. So for example, milling. We don't do enough milling to justify having a milling machine. So we use contracted services for milling operations. The curbs that go along roads, it's a specialized piece of kit. Again, we use the contracted services to provide that support. There's other things like regulatory. We wouldn't be able to do it enough to have the competency to, sort of, keep that up, so we hired that expertise. We also augment, and you'll see in the snow and ice in particular. So we have a baseline level of service. And there's times like, for example, under a snow and ice scenario, or even keeping up with our lane grading and some of those things, we augment with contracted services to make sure we can still achieve our level of service across the community. But we're maximizing our staff, we're maximizing our equipment, augmenting with contracted services. So a little bit of the Medicine Hat story, if you will. And I've kind of spoke to this in sort of the previous slides. One of the points that I would note is larger municipalities have greater internal capacity. Not surprising. So when you see a Banff, be it by geography and/or by size, a little bit more difficult for them to deliver the service, hence some of the reasons why some of their costs may be higher than, say, a Lethbridge or City of Medicine Hat. So maintenance, that's our potholes and lane grading primarily. Again, fairly favorable comparable. Where you see the biggest differences in that amortization. And again, difference between City of Medicine Hat and Lethbridge, for the most part. Medicine Hat, we look at amortization, our asphalt, our bottom lift for 40 years and our top lift for 20 years. Lethbridge does a 60/20 split, so you see those differences in the costs. And I've kind of spoke to this. Being slide 14. So slide 15, which is operations. And again, operations is street sweeping, line painting, and general road cleanup. So again, favorable comparison. However, question is to say, for example, the difference between City of Medicine Hat and Lethbridge. A couple of things. First off, we have a more intense or higher level of service than Lethbridge does in regards to line painting. We do our crosswalks twice a year, they do it once a year. We do it, they do their, all of their lanes, in fact, their markings, once a year. For our other lines, we do it three, four, or five times a year. And again, for a various number of reasons. As well, street sweeping. Lethbridge puts their street sweeping costs, part of it, against snow clearance, snow clearance operations. We put it all into this area. So you see the, see the, sort of, a little bit of the nuances around that. But again, favorable story. And this, on that slide 16, that's just kind of highlights the points I've already made. Traffic control. So again, what is it? It's our signs and signals maintenance. And again, favorable comparison in terms of the other municipalities. Not really much to more speak to that. And it's the story, which again, I've kind of talked to, spoken to. Now again, it's one of the points highlighted about that internal capacity. So if you go back, that example I was using, you can see where some of the smaller municipalities may also have some higher costs because of their size versus the larger ones have that internal, greater internal capacity. Sidewalks. So again, we're a little bit higher, and again, or the story, let's suggest again, a good, a good news story. So a little bit of the reason why we're a little higher for that timeframe of 2012 to 2014 was council of the day decided we need to catch up, we needed to catch up on our sidewalks, sort of, maintenance, we were falling behind in terms of our backlog. So there was a lot of emphasis over that period towards addressing that backlog. So you see those higher costs. We also, as a community, have decided that we want to put emphasis on accessibility, curb cuts. They're a little bit more expensive than strictly maintenance of our sidewalks. So costs go up a bit. Again, it's that, those levers to the cost, to the levels of service. And again, the summary, the sidewalk story, just a recap of what I've already articulated. So in conclusion to the roadways piece, let's suggest we're performing well. Our service levels are in good stead, and our costs are in good stead. However, I'll summarize at the end, that doesn't mean that we can stop looking at better ways to deliver our services, different ways to deliver our services. Part of the benefits of the benchmarking exercise is we do have a sense of what others are doing. We can go and see, continue to monitor what they are doing, and look at where we can make improvements to how we deliver the service. So we still have to stay vigilant on that. I know that's a direction that would financially fit, but it was our direct, it always has been our direction. Deliver the best service we can to the community as effectively and efficiently as possible. Snow and ice, the second part.
Oh, yeah, sure, just, sorry, and I was, I have to make sure I watch the screen. Counsel Hirsch.
Before you get into the other piece, wait, so thank you for the presentation. Sorry, before you get into the next piece, thanks for the presentation. Quick question in regards to, as a banker, I kind of got this one, words like amortization, et cetera. So one bullet point said the selected financial service life of equipment impacts amortization levels. Lethbridge decided to go with 12 years versus us 10. Have you found in discussions with Lethbridge that they have higher incidence of maintenance costs? Or is there an ability for us to maybe stretch out the AMS a little, the useful life of equipment a little longer?
Go ahead.
Counsel Hirsch, I don't have a good answer on that. Didn't really come out in terms of, they just do it differently. However, was one of those things that we did flag, is in terms of a follow-up to say, okay, they do do this, why? Is it something we should be doing? So it's something that we've kind of earmarked as a future discussion with Lethbridge. And/or regardless of what Lethbridge does, what is the right answer for the City of Medicine Hat in terms of how we amortize our assets? Now, I'll start to get way over my depth because I don't understand amortization all that well. I kind of follow the lead from finance in terms of what we should be doing. But there is an asset life expectancy piece to that, that we have a part to play, whether it be by fleet or by the roadways, for example. So more to follow on that, I think.
The question I had was whether or not it was just a, because you can decide to amortize an asset financially any way you want. There's a little bit of direction from GAAP, but I'm just wondering from a practical piece, do we run our equipment a little bit shorter than Lethbridge? And I guess that's what you're looking into.
Yeah, and we were, I think we're also revisiting how long we run our equipment.
Okay.
There is benchmark standards that are in place for different fleet assets.
Sure.
And we're questioning, we're looking at a little bit more than just, that's the answer. What is the operational, the maintenance history to that? What is the ability to sell it on the market and get a good return and buy new? If we've just upgraded it, and it's got a little longer life, and you're not going to get a great return on selling it, well then, maybe we should be keeping it. To, we spoke a little bit about the contract, it's in terms of, should we even be in the business of owning that asset and get out of it because it's expensive? And it's maintenance, not maintenance friendly, so look to maybe augment with contracted support. So we're looking at all those pieces, not necessarily what Lethbridge and others are doing, but as we speak, when we're looking at our fleet budget for, and what we want to replace moving into this next budget cycle.
That's great, thank you.
Thanks. Counsel McIntosh?
Thanks, your worship. Mr. Brown, I've had the chance to hear this presentation a few times, and one of your comments jumped out at me. The reason that the City of Medicine Hat paints their lines several times a year versus Lethbridge, which could be argued has similar weather patterns, or what might be the reason for us to do that?
Not sure, again, I've got, part of the, I think the go-forward is a little bit more discussion that needs to take place with the different municipalities around the why. There was a lot of effort to just kind of get that baseline in terms of, how are we measuring? And not necessarily get into that, really, the next level is to, okay, you do that why, to your point. However, speaking to, I guess maybe a little bit antidoteally, we've experienced through community asks and sense of the level of service, that there's a desire to have those, not to see the crosswalks and that with greater visibility. Do you paint them after 50% of it is gone, 25%, 75%? We have a belief that there's a strong desire within the community to not get it, not let it get down too far before we should paint it. Now, there's some desire to look to revisit, and we have to, our service levels, and that might be one of them. Same as our line, our lanes, markings in terms of delineation, particularly on our arterial roads and such. Now, this is line painting, it also encompasses plastic or thermal markings, which we also do. So it's a combination. Those ones, we don't, we only do once a year. So when I say we do, we may augment with painting, but we'll only bring in the machine contracted service to actually do the thermal, the thermal plastic inlay. So it's something we do need to revisit. We also are revisiting the type of materials we use. There's a base, there's a paint standard that we have to use, but it's that mix of inlay to paint to what's the appropriate balance, and can we reduce our frequency? And we're not there yet, but it's something, again, we've, we know we need to continue to look at. So I didn't really answer your question specifically, I kind of maybe dodged around it. It's a very appropriate question, but we still need to get to.
Thank you. Counsel Dubinowski?
Thank you, Jim Brown. The comparisons that you've drawn and the background information supports many of the outcomes that we're seeing here. And with the exception of Canmore and Banff, in many cases, we're in a good position. Help me understand a little bit more, or maybe the public, equally the public and I, the traffic control difference there. We obviously are measuring very, very well there. When I think of traffic control, I mean, it delineates nicely what you're, what you are measuring here. What would that translate to the public in a very simplistic form as far as why we might be saving? Now, so I'm not, I'm not critiquing that we're saving here, we're obviously benchmarking very well here. But what would that, what would that entail as far as a shortcoming or a difference, if you will, from even our next competitor, Red Deer or Lethbridge? What are we doing differently or not doing? Because at first blush, when I think of traffic control and include sign and signal maintenance and function, I think of our infrastructure, and it's really good. In fact, I would say in many cases, quite exceptional. So, and yet, we're benchmarking exceptionally well, so maybe you can add to that.
Again, we probably haven't got entirely to the bottom of all of that, but a couple of points are, a couple of highlights. First off, I spoke to the internal capacity, the smaller, so when you look at Banff, for example, a bit of an outlier, again, because of their small size and probably their location, similar with Canmore, sorry. Yeah, with Canmore. Lethbridge has a lot more traffic signals than we do. I think almost double. We have something like 89, I think they're about 180. So one might argue there should be synergies. Their costs per kilometer should go down, but in fact, they're a little higher. So I don't have a great answer as to the why, other than if you look at, and again, this is a spot in time and place of 2012 to 14, and trying to get all, so, I would suggest we're all pretty much doing the same thing in terms of how we manage our signals. They may have a little bit older infrastructure in terms of their traffic controllers. Those boxes that's kind of tell the signals what to do. So I think it's a mixed bag of all of that. The volume, where you are, whether we're at the sweet spot in terms of that 89, and maybe our costs start to go up or not. So again, I'm probably dodging around the question. We've identified through this benchmarking exercise, a lot of, hey, we're a little different. We, the next step, I think, as mentioned, is to the why to that.
If I, supplementary, I don't want to get, introduce a conversation into this, but, but, again, the average citizenry would probably associate synchronized lighting as part or not part of this process. And again, when I think of ourselves in comparison to some of these other communities that we've all frequented in some fashion for whatever reason, I think we're doing actually well again. So it's interesting, for sure, for me, and I think digging deeper and trying to understand why will help give some added credibility to doing this report, because otherwise, we're, we're just going to see the data, but we're not going to maybe understand what we can do to change our habits, or why we have great efficiencies, how do we maintain that? And so on and so forth. So I'm not saying you haven't, you don't have those answers, but it, I think you're right. Being able to dig in deeper and know what the derivatives of these sets of data are will probably be critical.
Thank you for that. A little bit of a segue. So one of the things we are looking at is the ability to optimize our signals is very much predicated on the technology that you have in place at the controller's level. And of course, you can appreciate the newer the technology, the greater, the simplest, the simpler it becomes, the more cost-effective it becomes. So we're starting to look at how we can upgrade and making sure that our 20-year-old traffic signal controllers get upgraded to current, and that gives us better ability to then look at how we can optimize, so they can start talking to each other and balance those loadings. Recognizing at the same time that we want to ensure that, you know, that 10-year traffic controller is still functioning, maybe it gets another five years, and it's not critical. So that's where we're moving towards and looking at our program across the city, and how can we start to both optimize at specific locations as well as along those corridors? So again, we, there's places where we can improve on, most definitely. And so it's keeping the asset class up to speed, up to date in terms of the technology that's there, as well as then, sort of, looking at what's right for our community.
Thank you. Counsel Turnbull?
Thank you, your worship. No, I agree with Counsel Dubinowski. I think majority of our citizens think our traffic control is pretty good. Their synchronization is important. I know that you can, I can drive from my place in Roseland all the way out to the leisure center in about 14 minutes. So it's not like the world is ending because you're held up for two or three minutes. But it does hold back traffic. And I think that some areas of the city have changed real quickly, going across to Stracken and especially in Southridge, where, you know, there was no left-hand turns, so traffic backs up. And what it leads to is people taking more chances. And I don't, I'm not sure what the accident rate would be down there, but I think we do a great job. But I think constantly, we need to review these situations, and you're right, we have to do it at a cost advantage to our citizens. And so I appreciate your report. Thank you.
Thank you. We've done a fair bit of new capital. I think, Mr. Mayor, you've made that comment. I think our tensions now are turning more to the, and we, not that we've been ignoring it, but look at our existing infrastructure that we have in place, and how can we, quote, optimize it? The life cycle, the systems, and make sure they're working optimally. So there's an opportunity here as well.
So go ahead and move to snow and ice.
What's that, Mr. Mayor?
You may go ahead and move to snow and ice now.
Thank you. Which seems kind of an odd topic, given the weather that's out there right now. So again, I'm at slide, I'm sort of just going to catch up here. So I'm at slide 23 in terms of the levels of service, and again, fairly motherhood, I would suggest. So this, you've seen the same kind of slide story with the transportation. Very similar in terms of, there's two pieces to this. There's the roads and parking lots, and there's the sidewalks. And again, we're at a very good spot in terms of our costs in relation to our levels of service. Now, again, there's, there's location, there's mountains, there's different weather patterns, all of that. But when we looked at generally what others are doing across the, sort of, the province, we're comparable in terms of our priority systems of one, two, and three, and higher efforts towards the arterials, and less so perhaps on the residential. We also did a study in 2011 where we looked at across, sort of, the western part of North America, Montana, Washington State, B.C., Saskatchewan, Manitoba, Alberta, and such. And that was, that the current program that we have in place was an outcome of that 2011 study. So it's not surprising that we're in a good spot. However, and I'll close at the end, indicating that, however, that was in 2011. And I think we're going to be looking to do a revise, a sort of, a review again of what is the appropriate level of service for our community? What are folks wanting to pay for or not, and how's the best way to deliver that service? So this is the, again, similar slide in terms of the costs in relation to the amortization, indirect, overhead, direct costs. And then contracted costs, or percentage, rather, that varies. So we use contracted services to augment our snow and ice delivery. So we have, if we have a lot of snow and we're falling behind on our levels of service in terms of clearing roads, we will bring in contractors to assist us with the meeting those levels of service. The more snow, the more we draw on that, over and above what our baseline can support. And again, I kind of spoke to the story around that. So now, just breaking it out into the two parts, which is the roads and then the sidewalks. You'll notice the Canmore, it's all blue. And the reason for that is they, for their roads, they deliver it all by contract. And again, the question may be the why to that, and I don't have the why. I just know that that's currently what their practice is, and hence why you're missing the, sort of, the other shades of color. And that kind of highlights that, some of the differences in the story. So sidewalks, again, a good story in terms of our standard, it's a 24-hour response. So regardless of the time of the week, we look to respond like the rest of our citizens do, 24 hours to that snow event. That's one of the things that we heard in 2011 when we did the review, is that you're holding us to a different standard than you as a city. We heard that loud and clear, and so we changed our levels of service to make sure that we matched that which we're asking our citizens to do, and that's embedded within our bylaw. But again, when we revisit this in 2000, sort of, in the next business cycle, see whether that stands or changes. But I would suggest it's probably a good standard because you start to pack down that snow, and it's very difficult to get it off later on. So there's a reason for that 24 hours. And again, that's a little bit of the story that I've kind of articulated. This is, so I'm on the material usage, a little bit perhaps of a confusing slide. You'll see the green, kind of, the average, and then the bars reflect the sands, the sand that we use. the sand, uh, that we use, uh, in comparison to others, and then the blue is, is the, the salt. And we, we look, we stand very well in terms of our amount of salt and sand, uh, uh, we also use other added, or other, uh, chemicals that are not in this, uh, in regard, um, uh, de-icing agents that we try to apply during a snow event, so hopefully reducing the amount of sand and, and, and salt in that that we have to put down. So, again, uh, uh, there's, there's a sort of that balance between that level of service to environmental considerations, and now, so, we're trying to balance, recognizing we also have to have a road safe for, for the traveling public, particular our hills and that. And again, the story just kinda recaps what I've articulated. So, in conclusion, uh, good level of service. We seem to be cost-effective, um, in delivering of that service, uh, but we do need to revisit what is our community expectations moving forward, and how's the best way to, uh, to deli- to continue to deliver those services at the most of cost-effective means we can. Well, that concludes the two parts of the presentation.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Dumanowski?
Hey, Worship, I, I would be remiss if I didn't speak to the roads, uh, the snow control, 'cause I've been very vocal about that over the many years, and, and, uh, to a lesser extent, the sidewalk and pathway maintenance, but I, I, I can't recall how many different iterations of reviews we've done over my time here, and I'm, I'm absolutely pleasantly surprised at the results of this. This is remarkable, quite frankly, to, to see and imagine that, um, I, I would've thought we would actually be in the mid, midsection or higher, and, and I know in some cases where the comparisons are difficult to draw with Banff in, in particular, but I, I, uh, I think this is quite remarkable. I, it, it seems to me then, um, because I, I, I hear people quite happy, very happy in the last even couple of years, more so than ever, and I've been less vocal, which means I'm happier, um, with the maintenance and the schedules and the cycle, and, and I think the community understands that, and yet, we're still incredibly efficient. And, um, and even in saying that, our, our use of, um, like sodium chloride or whatever I think you're referring to, that's not reference here, but our use of abrasive versus, uh, salt is, is amongst the lowest, and understandably, you can see Banff, uh, low on the average salt as well, but I, I'm, I'm blown away by this, and I think the public will be as well. So, you're right, though, we, we're gonna continue, and we'll have that next iteration of reviews, and what is the community standard? Has it changed? I mean, there's a lot of, uh, appetite in, for and against, um, different kinds of approaches we take for environmental reasons and, um, and cost savings reasons, but this definitely demonstrates that we are doing a great job and very effectively and efficiently. So, I'm not just saying that to toot our horn or, or the staff's horn, but this is, this, to me, that's just an incredible result to see in here.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Dumanowski. I would also like to reiterate, 'cause we sometimes get asked that question, um, do you have a budget? And we do have a budget, and we, we need to be mindful of that budget. However, we're, uh, we also have the level of service, and we look to respond to the level of service first, and then we worry about the budget afterwards. So, we've got our levels to, to ensure that the roads are clear and open for the traveling public, and then, uh, so that's what we deliver to. Uh, again, that may be a different answer later on, but that's currently our, our approach.
Thank you. Counsel Samraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, it's nice to hear that we're doing well, but I think the value of this, uh, is especially in the conversations that come out of, uh, some of these things. So, uh, I really appreciate these kind of benchmarking things, that it's really helpful for us to understand how we're doing compared to other municipalities, uh, but the conversations like whether it comes to amortization for equipment, or the number of times we, we paint our sidewalks, we never would've known that, or, uh, or had that conversation without, uh, these kind of, uh, studies. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, if we could get a, a motion for reception?
So moved.
I'll second that.
If we could vote? Counsel Turner, you're... And that was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving along now to public hearings. Our first one's item five-one on page ten, which is bylaw four-four-five-four, a bylaw of the City of Madison Hat to amend bylaw four-one-six-eight, the land use bylaw. This is, uh, housekeeping bylaw, if you will, uh, for the River Flats rezoning. I receive no submissions on this.
I move that bylaw number four-four-five-four be read a second time.
Second.
Yeah, if we could vote on that? That was unanimous, thank you. I have to have a, sorry, and then you have a public hearing as well. Um, if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this, please come down and state your name. I'll ask a second time if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this, please come down and state your name. And I'll ask you third and final time if anybody would like to come down and speak. Yeah, we still have to ask three times. Yeah, speak, uh, and state your name. Welcome.
Jeremy Williamson, five-oh-nine C Allowance Avenue.
Okay, um, you have a floor?
Wanted to say thank you to the planning commission for putting this forward, as I was one of the affected houses, and the change to low residential, or to, uh, commercial, uh, happened s- four months after I purchased my property. And, uh, so, I was kinda shocked to see it switched to commercial, so, thank you.
Thank you, and that will be passed on as well. Thank you. All right, I probably, I probably should do, uh, voting on second reading again, since we've had some. So, seeing nobody else, we'll close the public hearing, if we could vote on second reading. That was unanimous again. If we could get a motion for third?
I move that bylaw four-four-five-four be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Right, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Moving on now to our non-statutory public hearing, item five-two, page eighteen, bylaw four-four-seven-six, a bylaw of the City of Madison Hat to amend bylaw four-one-six-eight, the land use bylaw. Uh, this is the rezoning to, uh, direct control for the Aurora Sand development, and again, I've received no submissions on this.
I move that the bylaw number four-four-seven-six be read a second time.
Second.
So, I'll ask if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. I will ask you second time if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. And a third and final time, if you would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments on second reading? If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
I move then that the bylaw be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any comments? All right, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports now. Our first report's item six-point-one on page twenty-four, which is Development and Infrastructure Committee Meeting of May twenty-third. Um, this has, um, three items for adoption, which are the fees and charges for our DNI, um, division.
I'll move that report for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or comments on any of these six items? Uh, Counsel Samraj?
Uh, thank you. Um, on bylaw four-four-eight-three, it talks about the fees and charges, and it lists the different categories for some of the licenses. On page forty-seven, it lists huckster as a profession. I, uh, can anybody tell me what that is? I thought it was a scam artist, I didn't realize it was an actual, uh, legitimate profession.
Well, I'm gonna take a, I guess, this guy with a monkey and a drum, or a street juggler, or, uh, anybody's looking for money, is that a huckster, selling stuff? Selling something on the street?
Basically selling off the street, yep.
You're thinking, no, I'm not getting started, but you're thinking. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Counsel Turnbull?
Thank you, Worship. So, on number six, flood mitigation implementation strategy, I noticed that, um, Industrial Avenue flood protection area one is almost complete, and number two is going to be tendered. So, I wonder through to the CAO if you could give us an update on our preparation for floods, since these two areas are not covered yet by berm's. Thank you.
Through the chair, happy to do that. Um, so, every year, we go through, um, ensuring that we have exercised and are ready, uh, for flood with whatever state our permanent protection is in. Um, so, uh, with the, the more berm, permanent berm we have built, the less of the temporary measures we have to deploy, um, but we exercise to whatever level we are at every year, and we are prepared. And so, every year, we have more permanent berm and less temporary measures to put out, and so, it, it just keeps getting better. Um, it's obviously tricky when you have a berm that's half-built, but that's part of what they exercised this year, is how they would close that gap on Industrial Avenue, and, and, uh, how that would work, and we have sufficient temporary measures, uh, to take care of, uh, any predicted eventuality and manage the risk, and as I said, we have recently gone through an exercise of deploying that, the temporary equipment, and, uh, everything's ready.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, uh, thanks for that info. Um, I know that, uh, we've spent a lot of money on berms, uh, as a city, and, uh, uh, it's always a bit scary when we see waters rising, um, to know that, uh, we won't be truly safe until we have permanent, uh, berms, but I, I know that the temporary ones are very good, and we used them, uh, before, and they seem to work really good, so, thank you so much.
Uh, Counsel Dumanowski?
Just a question, um, on the, the building construction and renovation, uh, per- uh, not permits, but the, uh, the fees here. Help me understand, uh, you know, obviously, the list is very comprehensive, and understandably so. How do we, how do we maintain, um, how do we monitor this, I guess, to ensure that there's compliance from the standpoint of, 'cause it, it obviously includes the highest level of, or large, um, list of, of different, uh, contractors and construction modes and whatnot. Uh, and, and maybe I know the answer, but I'm asking, um, around, for example, when we have a hailstorm, and there, all of a sudden, we get a, a, a array of people coming into our community who, who want to landmark an, an address and become a contractor for this community, and, and maybe understandably so, uh, free enterprise, but how do we, how do we, is there any level, and maybe that's not a fair question asked, no, but it brought to my mind, how we maintain, or how do we monitor that? And I, and, and maybe my, my thought was when, when there's a permit that's taken out, or, or there's an expectation, or there's a, a responsibility for, for a resident to take out a permit, does it force us to do a background check on, on who's taking out the permit, or who's gonna be the contractor? And maybe Counsel Varga knows this 'cause of his day-to-day dealings, but it just brought to my mind, this is such a comprehensive area that, how do we maintain and monitor it?
So, I think he's, he's referred to out-of-town people coming in, 'cause it's a different rate for resident versus non?
It, so, yeah, so, just for clarity, are you talking about whether they have business licenses? Is that what?
Business licenses, and not just the ones from out-of-town, but, um, that, that maybe there's an established business that, um, decided to take a break, or, at a necessity or whatever, and, and has maintained their, their limited company, or their name, or their storefront, or whatever, maybe they're running, or their home, I don't know, but how do, I, maybe not a fair question asked here, but I, it, it kind of started with the, the thought in my mind that we have people who land in this community, um, in particular, again, after storms or of that nature, and, and they have, um, they, they drive around and they do the work, and, and, and obviously, getting a business license is to their benefit, but does this give us any opportunity, or what opportunities are presented in, in this for us to monitor that closely? Maybe, maybe they're, uh, disassociated and not a fair question, but I, it just brought to my mind, 'cause I know, uh, even after the last hailstorm, we had a lot of new businesses, and I don't wanna pick on any particular sector in here, but there were many of them, as you can appreciate, from out-of-town.
So, through the chair, I'll take a stab at it, but I, I may defer to the commissioner for further comments, but, uh, I mean, generally, it, it's buyer beware. It, it's consumers that need to ask the questions of, of the contractors, do you have a license? Uh, or, and, and do their background checking and so on, and we, we are not out there monitoring every contract and every, every business deal being made, um, and we operate largely on a complaints basis, so if there is a complaint that's investigated by bylaw, or, or by our, our officers, um, or safety codes for that matter, um, but, uh, I don't know if the commissioner might be able to round out that answer better?
Through the chair, I think, uh, the CEOs hit the high points. Uh, it's a combination of some proactive work by our staff. We've got two inspectors, so clearly, you know, they're limited in terms of their ability to get out and cover the whole city, but, uh, it's, it's still a very tight-knit community in, in the construction and the business sector. Everybody seems to know everybody, so if there seems to be some new people in town, uh, we hear about it, our inspectors hear about it, and they'll do the investigation from there.
Counsel Turnbull?
Thank you, Worship. I, on page sixty-one, which is the aeronautical fee comparison chart, uh, between us, Red Deer and, and Lethbridge, and at first sight, passenger fee, um, in Madison Hat is nine dollars and thirty-nine cents, seven seventy-five in Cranbrook, nothing in Lethbridge and Red Deer. So, I, I got panicky, but then I had to, to look what other things that the other communities have that we do not have. So, they call it a municipal improvement tax. Lethbridge is fifteen dollars per person flying in, Red Deer is ten, and Cranbrook is eleven, so, at the end of the day, um, Madison Hat is certainly equal to Lethbridge. Red Deer's lower, of course, because they do not have Air Canada or WestJet into their community. So, I just thought that was important when our citizens are looking at that comparison, that they look at all the numbers, and not just the first one. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report's now is item six-two, page two-hundred-and-forty-seven, Administrative Committee Meeting of May twenty-fourth, and this report's for adoption and information with the, um, sale of one zero-six-six Yule Street and the Counselor Code of Conduct bylaw for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report's item six-three, page two-hundred-and-seventy-four, Audit Committee Meeting, May twenty-ninth, and this is just for information.
Move reception, Worship.
Okay, if we could vote? And that was unanimous.
Next item six-point-four, page two-hundred-and-seventy-five, Administrative Committee Meeting, May thirtieth, uh, for adoption and information, and the adoption is the Clearwater Property Disposition Item.
So moved.
Second.
Any, Counsel Turnbull?
Thank you, Worship. So, perhaps, uh, through the chair to our, um, CAO, um, maybe you could just give us the short version of the Clearwater Property Disposition in natural gas, and what that means to, to our city as a, as a business decision.
Sure. Um, yeah, through the chair to Counsel Turnbull. As Counsel is aware, um, our natural gas, or NGPR growth strategy, had a specific, um, tranche in there that dealt with optimization of the current portfolio, and, um, to that end, last year, we had three or four, one large and, and a few smaller dispositions. Um, in, in, um, with upstream portfolios, an asset that doesn't carry a lot of value to one operator, because it's marginal in the portfolio, may actually be quite valuable to somebody else if they can combine it with, with their own, uh, flow out of an area and use their infrastructure in a more optimal way. So, that's where you find these kinds of deals, where it's, it's something that has fairly low cash flow, uh, to us, and really is really more of a liability than an asset, uh, in fact, has some value to another operator, and so, this is another one of those. It's only twelve wells. It's currently actually shut in, so we have no current cash flow out of it, and, uh, and it has a, a liability associated with it, and we've been able to, uh, to make a, a small deal with another operator who sees greater value in this because of the way their infrastructure works, um, they are able to optimize and, and, uh, run this asset, so, um, it's, it's another cleanup. It's a very small deal, but, uh, but it's part of the ongoing clean eco- cleanup and optimization of the portfolio.
Well, thank you for that, because, um, as I've stated many times here, um, we have two business units, and, um, NGPR is one of our business units, and this is a pure and simple business decision that is in the best interests of the profitability of NGPR, so, thank you so much for that.
Any other questions or Counsel Samraj?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to confirm one other thing, that, yes, the future liability for our management costs is something we take very seriously, and this is, uh, related to that, but another part was that we're careful about the companies that we sell to, in that we wanna make sure that they can adequately perform that, uh, that... sure that they can adequately perform that future abandonment. And it's not something that we're kind of dumping and walking away from. Thank you.
Through the chair, absolutely, and a disposition like this also has to be approved by the Alberta Energy Regulator for that same reason. They don't want to see companies dumping non-productive assets into an unsustainable company and having wells ending up in orphan well situations. So they still need to approve this, and we would not do this kind of deal with a company that doesn't have long-term sustainability.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report is Reports for Reception. Item 7.1, page 280, the Heritage Resources Committee Minutes of May the 8th.
I'll move the report for reception.
Can I get a secondary?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote? And that was unanimous.
Next report for reception is item 7.2, page 283, Municipal Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of May the 9th.
I move this report for reception.
Second.
Any comments? If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Moving on now to our bylaws for second and third readings. Item 8.1 is bylaw 4488, page 289, a bylaw of the City of Madison Hatt to incur indebtedness in amount $7,500,000 for the purpose of construction of electric distribution substation.
I move that bylaw 4488, bylaw of the City of Madison Hatt, be read and passed a second time.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, that's okay, Councilor Turnbull?
So again, I know I repeat myself when we have these, and we did it at first reading, but I wanted to make it very clear again, our city doesn't just walk around and spend money, it doesn't have a case to make. And our business case for this bylaw is for the substation in northwest of our city that will meet the future needs of that area's electrical needs, and plus, of course, as you know, we're, Hut Aid has got their first connection, maybe today or tomorrow, I forget, it was in the paper, and of course, Aurora Sun will be coming later this year. So this is, again, a business case, paid for out of the revenue and expense costs of our business units. So, council, I appreciate your supporting us.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If we could vote on second reading? That was unanimous?
Move that bylaw 4488 be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous.
All right, moving on to new bylaws. Our first new bylaw's item 9.1, page 293, bylaw 4481, bylaw of the City of Madison Hatt to amend bylaw 4438, the Safety Codes Permit bylaw.
We can do 9.1 to 9.5 Omni if we like? Absolutely, okay. If you would like to read them in, and then...
Yes, I'll read them into the record, and then we can do first reading on those items. Next one is bylaw 4482, a bylaw of the City of Madison Hatt to amend bylaw 2300, amusement arcade and billiard room bylaw. Next, we move to 9.3, bylaw 4483, a bylaw of the City of Madison Hatt to amend bylaw 2339, the licensing bylaw. Item 9.4, bylaw 4484, a bylaw of the City of Madison Hatt to amend bylaw 2648, the taxi bylaw. And bylaw 4485, a bylaw of the City of Madison Hatt to amend bylaw 3472, the escort service bylaw.
Your worship, I seek leave of council to introduce those bylaws, write it to the record, and ask that they be read a first time omnibus.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have we got a secondary? If we could vote? And that was unanimous.
Thank you. Item 9.6, page 317, bylaw 4489, City of Madison Hatt to amend bylaw 4168, the land use bylaw. This is the Wholesome Road.
I move that bylaw 4489 be read a first time.
Second.
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
And our final bylaw is item 9.7, page 319, bylaw 4492, a bylaw of the City of Madison Hatt to establish a code of conduct for members of council.
Your worship, I take leave to introduce bylaw number 4492, and wish it read a first time?
If we could get a secondary?
Second.
If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to new business. Item 11.1, page 327. This is a resolution regarding that land use bylaw amendment 4476 that we did for the Aurora Sun. This resolution is, "Council granting authority to the MPC to determine and approve any development standard or regulation related to a proposed development on the lands, as long as the use is a cannabis production and distribution facility, or an agricultural use, as defined under section 4.5 in the land use bylaw number 4168. And in doing so, shall have regard to the development regulation shown in section 1064 of the land use bylaw 4168. And this resolution will take effect today once you have adopted it." Thank you.
So I need a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you. Seeing no more business before this council, we are adjourned.